All right, Michael, we're calling the meeting to order. We have four members and Rachel. And Matt out in the ether. So this is probably your time, Matt, general discussion and open forum for anyone present. Would you like to stand up and say something?
I'm sitting down right now. Thank you very much, everyone, for volunteering for the Parks and Recreation Commission. This will be my first meeting. I just wanted to listen in, see what was going on, follow the agenda. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you. All right, so if there's no one else that has a general discussion point, we move on to old business. Do we have old business?
Um, still need to look into the fencing at the wood fencing at River Road.
I guess the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, I've not looked into that yet. Um, and then same with the the cord along the back of the fence line.
Keep that ball out of the.
That replacement as well, yeah. Um, but they are on the, on the radar.
How about that divot in the Pippin Wall Court? Not a good deal.
I had, I, I have not thought of that.
So I haven't seen it. I don't know.
It has not gotten worse. Um, it's same, so.
Then we have to decide when the group is gonna do your yellow fencing at the top of the.
Yeah, I talked to Kyle Barrett that runs the CTAVL program. They're gonna do a whole new derby up here.
Oh, wow.
Next on Sunday, Monday. Um, so he said he would like to get Tony up here to, to, to put it on, so we'll see.
I'm all for that.
Before, if they can do it for, for that, great. If not, I'm gonna need your assistance.
Okay.
I'm getting that up.
Yeah, that's okay.
But I'll let you know in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, it'll be great. If they're home on Derby, they probably kind of want it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, did you say the derbies this weekend?
Yeah.
All right, well, they're gonna have before the dirt, that's all.
They're young men, they may pull it off.
Great.
Um, but I do have a question about the, uh, do you know anything about the student board by chance?
School board?
The school board back there.
Like what?
I, i- is it a remote access? Do you know?
Yeah, there should be a wireless remote somewhere.
Okay.
So there's a breaker that you probably have to turn on.
Turn the breaker on.
Yeah, Chris Mark did scoreboard, so.
Once that.
You have to do that at River Road as well.
Right.
So you turn that on, it connects to the handheld, and it should rock. I'm not sure where that handheld remote is.
It's not either, couldn't find it.
Really?
Yeah, they tried to connect it yesterday, so I'm gonna have to.
Can they take the remote from the other one and use it there?
I don't know how they pair up Eddie. I don't know how it works.
I don't either, I'm just asking.
It's like a garage or it comes paired.
I was gonna look into it tomorrow, so if I have any issues, I'll, like, I'll, um, I'm also circle that with you.
It's just about on your box on your desk, right? Not Eddie, I'm not Eddie, uh, to me, you know. I'm just hoping, maybe get him a phone, you know.
Okay.
He, he accepted all the.
Yeah. And it could be, it could have been somewhere when Home Works was putting together, I don't know. Um.
Not that shit.
I don't.
I didn't, I didn't see, I was.
When I, like, looked around in there, but I'll do, I'll do a deep look tomorrow.
Okay.
And follow up.
I, I think if you turn the breaker on, you have a console.
Wow.
Console probably has a button on it that says connect or something. I think line of sight a hundred and fifty feet or more, it works.
All right, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, but that's all, well, I guess that's business, but, uh, that's all for old.
Okay. Um, there's no new business, so director's report.
Um, so just like a quick breakdown of the summer. I don't have final numbers from summer camp yet. Um, I wanna put wages into that equation, um, and then same with Hall's Pond, like, or we just, uh, but we did have brought in, uh, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in pond passes.
Oh, wow.
Uh, this year.
That's like a lot, that's more than we'd ever, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are, it's like a lot.
Sounds like a lot to me.
Yeah, at what, thirty dollars a pop or something?
Not sure.
Family class for residents is sixty-five per hour.
Okay.
Sure, it's not gonna cover labor.
That's what I wanna finalize, because we just finished the year over from last week, so I don't have final numbers on that yet. Um, and then same with summer camp as well. Um, I don't wanna fully dig into those ones, yeah, but the most we had was thirty-one for a week, lowest was seventeen for a week.
Sounds okay.
Yeah, we gave out three scholarships through human services.
Very nice.
They have a scholarship program. Um, we like to keep the, the cost the same, assuming we don't get a grant for it. Um, but we also want to increase the salary of camp director, um, because I think she's a bit low compared to what she does.
Sure.
Um.
I can do that.
We're looking into, uh, we're weighing a couple, we're weighing some options right now. I don't know if.
Like, like if you put the same, but odds are you're in a half.
Right, so we might, we might get some scholarship or some, some grant money from, uh, so, we're potentially, well, at the end, we'll see, I don't know. Um, so possibly that. Um, a lot of the costs that we had this year came from the grant money from the after school grant that was transferred to us, so most of the supplies and programming that we did was paid for that. But we didn't still have expenses. I can give you guys the rest next.
Does HHS have a line item on their budget for that summer camp like we do?
Who?
Uh, like human services?
Yeah, so everything is split in half.
Okay.
Uh, with sal, with wages, split expenses, um, is that budget is split also, so everything.
So there's a, it's gonna be split as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
We actually, we talked about what would it look like if it just went to, like, partisan rec, uh, like, from a budget standpoint, but then the point of it, because then it would simplify the financial side of things, um, but the point of it is to have service and is human services involved in it.
Sure.
Um, and so if, what would be the point? If they, you know, looking at any of the financials, so, yeah, um, so we're gonna keep that. Um, and then, let's see. I'm, had a guy come look at the shed back here on Thursday, um, for painting it, so he was gonna get back to me on a price for that. Um, the soccer goals at River Road, I believe they were from two thousand eight or nine. I was, I was looking back in records and I think they're from
Okay.
that time.
I can purchase those.
I don't, we got them right now. I had a big lot of soccer, when, but, I don't.
I don't know.
Why they fall apart?
There's one, the, one of the big ones, um, last week, the week, and the week, um, when Dave was moving, moving it to Mo, uh, which it had had a problem before, but the, the front of the goal, um, it just, it pops out, it's not in place anymore, so that would either be an aluminum weld or I, uh, I'm gonna talk to the company, I don't know what replacement piece there would be for that. Um, I looked into getting a replacement piece for one of the smaller goals, uh, earlier in the spring, um, but I don't think they've.
Is it just broken or sliding?
It slides, it slides in.
Yeah.
To the spot, and then it, it's not, like, you couldn't move it. So as long as it stays in one spot, it's fine, as I told.
See if, uh, Home Works can just drill it out, put a carriage bolt in.
But they're not, they get all, they're not meant to be moved because they just.
Right.
They get weaker and weaker and weaker.
They're heavy, they're heavy, because I've had to move them for the constant series, so, um, if there, you can get wheel kits, so if this is fixable, then I either want, I wanna get wheel kits from, I was talking to Phil, because they just got brand new soccer goals this hat, like, year ago, uh.
But these are the main goals, you're talking.
Yeah.
The, the game goals.
Twenty-four hours.
Those shouldn't, my opinion is they should stay. And they should buy little ones.
Right.
For the, the drills and the, like, scrimmage deals.
Everything goes over, they just blow it.
There's still any more to Mo.
But the teams do move them as well.
They will. The newer ones might be unreal, I don't even know. They're all, they're all the time, there's no, they, they, they never stay still.
Right, doesn't it sound like if it's a sleeve, it can be drilled out with a little boulder?
Either that or it's the plate on the side.
Right.
Hold the plate on the side.
I, I think, I think your friend Troy could fix it. And if he can't.
I could take a look at it, too. Speaking of fixing, there's the, uh, at the far end, south, southern anyway, where the wood fence comes to an end, there's a gap, in other words, there's no chain. But any vehicle can drive on the field and wreck it over, you know.
But also.
Yes, so all the way down the ver, where the wood fence comes to an end.
Yeah.
Then there's, there's nothing, and there's a metal post over here, we need the chain back up again, because you know, we get some crazy kids that drive on the field to donuts.
The part, right by intern, well.
No, no, down the end by the parking lot.
Okay.
We're talking about, I'm talking about the, the guard, you know where the guard rail fencing is, the wooden guard rail fencing.
Yeah.
Right, where that comes to an end.
Uh-huh.
Right next to the, it's, it's all the way down to the end where the commuter lines.
Okay.
Yeah, there's this, this, we need a chain back up again.
Think we relied on debris in the past, but the debris is gone since Troy.
Gotcha.
But maybe that's what Troy uses to get onto the field, but we can't let it else get on there, we have a problem. Real problem. Yeah.
I think the goal's fixable.
The other thing.
Time to really look at it.
Yeah. The lights on the field, on the, on the track were never on this summer. I mean, this is like.
In the back?
Yeah, right.
Which, which light?
They turn on.
It just seems we are, I go.
Spotlights or the downlights?
The downlight, the truck lights.
Yeah, those are on.
Yeah, they, they did turn on.
They did?
Yeah, and then they turn off around.
Ten o'clock, I think.
Nine fifteen, nine thirty.
All right, well, I guess.
The timer, like.
But.
Time, it's astronomical.
They did take.
So it knows sunrise, sunset.
Then.
It's the best.
Change.
Yeah.
Okay. You put attitude, launch two, did it?
And the playground lights stay on.
Yeah, it's called astronaut.
Well, they stay on.
It's nice, because then you.
They turn on earlier.
Turn on one half hour before sunset.
Yeah.
But they shut off.
Yeah.
It's like.
Well, no, it's blocking it. They're, they're, they don't like the whole trap.
Very expensive, I suggested to a customer, they say, yes, the price, it's astronomical.
I don't think there's change.
Spread out.
Yeah.
Yeah. To get like the full coverage trap.
Right.
Yeah. Yes.
So they're on, we're good.
Yeah, it's just a shorter window that they're.
I can take a peek and change it if you want. Out front, they're on till ten, right?
That's not that important, it's this time of the year, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's not a big deal, if they, they turn on this one.
There's not too many, I'll check them, next time I go down there, check them.
It's a daylight thing for the track, you know.
I see folks down there at night sometimes.
Yeah, it is, it is gonna start getting darker.
Quicker, real soon.
We're in, we're in it a little bit now, but.
Yeah, we're in, yeah.
Yeah.
Happening. August day, it was two months ago. Almost.
Um.
Look at the day.
So yeah, the, the wheel kits for goals are seven hundred dollars, seven to eight hundred dollars a pair, so it'd be or for four, for four, so it'd be I'm sure, if we want it for small holes, too.
Do we?
Well, it'd be sixteen hundred.
Each goal has four wheels, you don't tip it down and drag it out, too?
No, I talked to Phil about that, because he looked into all of that, was ordering them, and he said, I mean, because they're heavy, so to tip it, even if the field is wet, you're pushing it through wet. Like.
Not only that, you'd never be able to stand it back up, because it kind of chipped back up. Only a couple of wheels, right? You need like four guys.
We need the wheels. Why do we need the wheels?
Because they move them.
And they, yeah, because it's, they're heavy, and when you're moving them, it causes the, like, that's why, that's why the weld, after all these years, is like, the rest of the goal is fine, it's just if the weld is no longer pulled together.
You know, Bill, Bill Beliak should be able to tell us whether or not they bought those or not, right?
Yeah, he could.
I mean.
Does he still live in?
Yes, he's still, and he's still on the committee, and he.
He's Canadian, I think, now or something.
No, 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 he's local, I see him.
Texting right now.
I see him. At, uh, oh, Jim. And he said, he goes, look, we have practice every Monday, on Mondays, he goes, I just can't, you know, goes, I wanna participate, but I can't, so.
Maybe else playing for the Patriots.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe if it's theirs. Putting them up there, but we can get us. All right.
Can I ask him if, what is, what is his, is it WHAM?
WHAM.
W H A?
Or.
W A.
NU is the AU proud system there.
Which one is Bill Biliak?
He's WHAM.
James.
Uh, NU, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Switched?
Yeah, because he has to use, um, to store some of his goals. I mean, it could be WHAM, but, but NU is the one that practices.
Your, your, yeah, organization, your organization.
And then the middle school, yeah, I think I told you, just the middle school's gonna be practicing and playing games there at River Road this fall. Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, so it's gonna get a lot, a lot of.
So you have to be, go. Have to get those sprinklers out.
I know.
It's good. Steve watering it this morning.
Uh?
I saw Steve watering it this morning. The River Road field? No, the New Hall School fields. Oh, all right. Got one sprinkler that's just standing there watching. Wow, that's gonna take hours to do that whole. He's got that kind of time. I guess you have to spend money on grass seed.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we're not getting much rain.
Not long.
All right.
Um, the assistant position was posted last Thursday, um, so I have gotten six or seven interested parties.
I don't know.
So I sent them the application, the official application, so as of right now, I don't have any official applications in hand, but I just reached out to them today. Had a week. So actually, the budget line item for the assistant position did drop thirty-five hundred dollars. This.
It sounded like they were gonna put it back. Because they missed, yeah, I know.
I also thought.
But it's like they missed time, so that's why they pulled it out.
Right.
But now that we have a new, you're gonna have a new assistant, that should go back.
Math wise, we, like, if we wanted to do ten hours a week, um, not including Thanksgiving week, Christmas week, New Year's week, uh, to fit in the budget, we'd have, we could hire someone as, as the first or second week of September.
Oh, all right.
So we're good.
Fill out this year.
Yes.
Then for our next budget.
Right, for this budget cycle.
Okay.
Yeah, but for next year, if we want someone the whole year.
We need to put thirty-five hundred back or more.
Yeah.
On your budget.
Fill out those.
Well, actually, did they change the budget? They changed the line item?
The, yeah, so they dropped the budget about thirty-five hundred dollars from last year to this year, and so they just, they just pulled it out of the.
Yeah, I remember this.
Assistant position.
Yeah, there, I know, I was there. They talked about doing it just because they knew they had, they weren't gonna fill the position, so why leave the money there?
Yeah.
To roll it over. We just gotta remember, come next budget, we have to fight for it.
I, yes, yes, yes.
We will, we'll get it back. I think. We'll fight for it, we're. So these six or seven people, you gotta, you gotta talk to them, or?
I sent them all the official application, like the Wellington application, so, uh, and then like the DCF background check form, um, so once they fill that out.
I mean. Super apples, apples.
Yeah.
Did you get people from town or all over the place?
Oh, sure.
What happened?
Yeah, um, but they did send me resumes, so I have to fit resumes, I just need the official.
Then.
Um.
All sports and leisure students?
Um, one student, yeah.
Only just one?
Yeah, one student, but I just posted it starting today for the next week or two, um, at UConn, the Daily Digest job posting board, so hopefully see if anyone's interested.
Great cake for a student.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. It just would be a little iffy in the summer, when I need help, so I don't know how that would work out with love, but
I guess they were.
Across that bridge.
Local.
Right.
Things are with the Colorado or, you know.
Yeah. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
It's a little sparse in the summertime, though. I don't know.
Would be great for you to get somebody in that position.
I guess, absolutely. Um, basketball, uh, we had our first official meeting last week, uh, for the Lakes League, so, uh, uh, I'm going to be hiring gym supervisors, but I wanna look at the budget, um, to see how it fits in for a hockey set, an hourly rate and stuff like that, because, so the person that they had for the gym supervisor, now she moved away, so, um, she can't be right, I'm back. Uh, and then.
We have a lot, that's an amount.
And just under use basketball, but there's no wage.
Does that money come out of the fees that we take for basketball?
I, yeah.
That's how we pay for that person?
Yeah.
Just consider profit.
But you do, you have to have, have some.
Yeah.
Herbeams and stuff. Uh, and then see, so I want to get registrations out by the later than the third week of September. Uh, and have it due this third week of October, so.
When does basketball start?
Basketball starts December sixth.
Oh, wow.
Eighth, whatever that, that day.
Sorry.
Um, yes, so they need, uh, the league needs final final calendar, every day, I, November fourteenth, so, um.
You sending registrations out, are you, um, you make any notes on, saying, hey, uh, I need some coaches?
Sure, wait, so they, I'm sorry.
Basketball, are you gonna make a note on the registration forms that if they're interested in coaching?
Even.
Typically, it's parents, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, there's a, there's a section about coaching, too, um, so I was just gonna follow last year's, but I'm gonna put it online to the Open Gov site, so I wanna see basketball's gonna be the test on Open Gov for a large registration type of thing, I wanna see how it works. Um, we did it, I did it for Hall's Pond, uh, but that's a little different. So I just wanna see how it works with basketball, and after that, assess if it's going to be helpful long term, or if an online rec software would be beneficial.
Oh, this is like the town software?
Um.
Taco?
So Open Gov is used for all, like, zone, uh, through, heading zoning.
Oh, all right, okay.
For billing, that kind of stuff. Um, so I have access to that, um, did it for Hall's Pond, but I wanna give it a go for basketball and see what happens.
Yeah.
Something that. But otherwise, I think the rec software would be very helpful, I think Jimmy brought it up.
He did.
And then I think Bethany might have brought it up as well, prior to saying, um, uh, because I found notes, she was looking through all of the different rec softwares.
It's like, we talked about it with Jimmy, who's a huge number, but something that'd have to go on the budget.
He was a cadence, three hundred something.
It's pretty good, I think it was, it's a monthly fee, right? You buy the program, then you have to pay it online or access.
Yeah, it's like an, it's a world fee.
Okay.
Based off of, some of them are based off of how many registrations you have in here, some of them are based off of how much money it would be flowing through it.
With the Open Gov, do we, how much do you lose, should they take?
I don't know. I actually don't know, not sure, but I know the town base for that program, that's for years, so.
Just to make it, just make the registration process easier for you.
I spent so much time doing summer camp registrations this year, so.
So you don't have to physically look at them, check them off, whatever, it's all.
Less paper.
Or payment, it's all done outside of you.
Yeah, it's, and then I can pull up and pull a report right from there.
Yeah.
So the, the different, like, the rec software does more communication side of things, so if all these people sign up for this program, let me communicate with them through the software, uh, instead of taking down all the emails, and then going to my email, and then doing all of that, it's all in one spot. Uh, and then, from a history standpoint, if you ever want to look up and see who was in this program ten years ago.
Yeah.
You can, like, I can't, I don't have that information right now.
It's an Open Gov thing, you don't have it.
But, like, from the paper registration.
It was the way we did, yeah, it's a paper, some problems. Yeah.
And, like, for me to sit there going through binders and like stuff, like, it's just not worth my time, to see how many people registered, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So just from like a data management side of things, a rec software would be huge.
Okay.
Um, and then time, it, it, it would be, it would become like another employee in a way, um, without hiring. Um, that's kind of how I also would have it.
It'd be helpful, what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Very helpful, um, and you can also put facilities, so if people wanted to rent out this baseball field, the pavilion, they can go online and see what what the availability is, and register right through, and pay right through there, I would have to accept it, but it could all be done right on there, it's not like, uh, calling me, oh, I'm not in the office, okay, leaving voicemail, back and forth, it's email, you know, it's just, yeah, it's, makes it so much more smooth.
I don't know, it makes sense, it makes sense. Many people know how to go on open.gov to get bond passes. On our website, they actually do one thing.
On, yeah, on the website, I put under Hall's Pond, a plate, like, you can click.
It's like a.
Yeah, you can, I just said, put, put here.
So if the open.gov works fine for basketball, it works for also rec program?
No.
Wouldn't be as comprehensive.
Right, you would get the, you would get to be able to pull reports of registrations, but you wouldn't get any of the communications. Or, uh, like the financial, yeah, yeah.
It's got a one-way portal, just.
Yeah.
Just makes it easy, it's just an easy sign up page.
It's great for permitting.
Yeah, driving down all.
Yeah, exactly. But. Uh, so wanna look at that in the future. Concert numbers, I do have that, so. Um, I haven't gone through the money bag yet to see how much. Extra, um, we took in from concession, but we made under fifty dollars definitely in concession. So I personally thought it would be a lot, but.
Yeah, I do too.
So maybe it was my lack of options, I don't know. It was pretty sad, um.
So people are bringing their own things?
Yeah, people bring their own stuff.
Alright, people don't eat that much there, you know, they, a couple of people eat there, unless you already don't.
Yeah, unless you're cooking food and people know that and they're, they're, they're holding on supper, they're not gonna eat a lot of candy, not the, not the, not the old people.
This, there's, uh.
Well, now you know for next year.
Yeah.
You have to do anything, really, I mean, unless you wanna find somebody who's interested. You have to do anything, fifty bucks running all around.
Yeah.
It's not worth it, you, you have to invest in all the food.
Right.
Then now it's just gonna get old, and what are you gonna do with it?
Right, well, I spent. A hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Yeah, so it's not worth it for us.
Now, I bought it in bulk, I could have, knowing this, I could have just gone to Big Y and grabbed.
Sure.
A twelve pack of Pepsi and like, that would've been good for the whole summer, you know?
Maybe next year, see if you can get PTA or somebody interested, let them take the burden, then at least we're providing refreshments. They can.
Well, it doesn't make sense for us to do it if we're spending a hundred and sixty bucks.
Yeah, right, not for us, but then somebody else, somebody else wants to do it, they think they can make money more power to them.
We're not really, well, I mean, you like to make money, but really, we're just providing a service.
Right.
Concerts are sponsored by. Outside organizations, so it's not a cost, it's just a service, we're providing the concerts for.
The concerts, yeah, but we're not there to feed people at loss, so.
We're not there to feed people at a loss, but if somebody wants to do it, and then there's soda and. Candy available for adults and kids to run around. Maybe hit PTA or somebody like that early. Way before.
Or put on the website, you know, interested parties could reach out, if you're interested. Do whatever you want, I'm just throwing out ideas.
Yeah.
How is that shed, the concession stand? The mess or not too bad?
It's fine now.
It's fine now.
Cause I cleaned it.
Deep mouse too.
Yeah, so we're good, we got the boys in boxes and, uh. I've put a couple of those, uh, tarot in, bait traps there too, that have been wiped clean.
Oh, good.
So.
You didn't cancel any concerts, you said?
Did we cancel one? Didn't it rain that one last time?
It was supposed, so the last show was. It was supposed to storm and. Like, alright, do you wanna just try it? And they're like, yeah, let's just do it over here. It's wriggled for ten minutes.
Cool.
And it was fine, so I think it definitely impacted attendance though, uh. But.
What was the biggest attendance, what band?
So the lowest was the last one with about twenty-five people, and the highest was. Shaded Soul and they had about a hundred and sixty-five.
Wow.
Yeah.
Cause of us, or they have a following?
I think because they have a following.
Yeah, what's the next, the next one down here, I've got. The next latest?
The, uh, Savage Brothers and Savage Brothers and Val Rogers started that, they were about the same at like a hundred and five.
Okay.
That's good, group anything over a hundred is good.
Yeah, absolutely, so three shows over a hundred, not bad.
Yep.
And then we had eighty. Eighty, eighty-five was. The Rock Solid Alibi, sixty-five was Bruce John, Jana. And then the last one, whether, it, I think it would've had been within twenty-five.
If the weather had been good.
Oh, yeah, for sure, I just thought, I assumed it was canceled. Cause we went to a bunch of. That's good.
Yeah. Uh, so in sponsors, we had. Four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, um, we paid. Five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and so with that, all of. The money, oh, and then the raffles, we only took in seventy dollars, uh, so that's not a moneymaker either. We tried, yeah, this is a lot of.
That's good.
So with all that stuff.
You have a line item for the concerts too, right?
Yeah.
In our budget. So you were okay at the end of it all?
I forgot to add in the cost of the food. Let's see. Well, alright, so minus the food was, we were. Negative seven hundred and seventy dollars-ish, my math is right.
Even with the budget?
And then if you factor in the budget, we were positive two thousand three hundred.
It's good.
Yeah, so we weren't negative, but I learned a lot from this.
That's great. Yeah, yeah, and you're still here, so it must've been a positive experience.
It was, it was fun.
Yeah, it is, music is great.
Yeah, it was.
What was that band, Shaded Soul?
Shaded Soul.
Gonna get them again next year.
They're, yeah, they were, this. I got them before they were announced the number one wedding band in Connecticut.
Wow.
This, yeah, yeah, so pretty cool. Very diverse, very diverse crowd too, at that one.
Oh, good, age-wise?
Age-wise, yeah.
Cool.
Uh, they definitely had like the biggest spread. So. Yeah.
Well done.
They were fun, my friends came to it too.
Now that's nice, that's good.
Yeah.
I think now that it's starting to get darker, as we start do, doing things on River Road, you should try those floodlights out back. The ones that aim into River Road. So like soccer, at the end of the day, if they're getting off the field, you could show one of those guys how to turn those floods on. There's a whole set of lights.
They haven't turned on yet?
Well, they're for special events.
Oh.
There's no need to light the field, just walk in the back.
I didn't even know that.
It's out back, there's two time clocks.
On that big billboard in the back.
Yeah, and you would just manually turn them on. I'll show you how one day. But you, you know, Bill Billyack are one of those guys? They, they would probably be happy as it gets more to fall.
Yeah.
They could extend their time on the field, maybe not playing wise, but picking up wise.
Well, one of the, one of the coaches that runs. Runs it, she asked me if they could use those lights.
Yes.
I did not know that they were. Floodlights, for that, I thought she meant the lights used for the track, and she wanted them moved up.
Oh, no, you've got serious floodlights aiming into the field.
Okay.
And the timer, or you, you have to shut them off as well?
So, I took them, I turned them off. So you have to manually turn them on, it didn't make sense to light the field up when we're really just trying to light the walking path.
Okay, you have to turn them off when they leave.
Yes, oh, yes, so maybe what, maybe what I do is.
Yeah.
Get them on the timer for the fall.
Right now, they play till it's dark.
Yeah.
I'll do that, I'll do that.
They play till they can't see, so if you see them out there.
Yeah.
If they can barely see what they're doing, they're still trying to.
I'll align all the time clocks, I'll go down there, align all the clocks and get those floods to shine, the same amount of time as the walking path.
We used to have, uh, basketball, when Stafford, you just turn this thing, click, 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 it would go, you know?
And you used to only have three stations on TV.
I'm just saying.
I remember we had that in Manchester, twenty-five cents was fifteen minutes.
But do we want the lights on every day, the floodlights always as well? If nobody's there.
I mean, there's, they're pretty. Well, NEU practices Monday, Thursday nights, but the middle school. Plays games, I don't know what times their games are yet, but they practice both. Practice, but I don't know when.
Games are, the games are right after school too.
Are they?
So you can set those clocks up as events, so I could tell it, don't turn on on Saturdays and Sundays, but do turn on on Mondays. You know, to Fridays or, we can do whatever you want.
Alright.
For those floods.
Alright, maybe Monday, Thursday until.
Think about it, then email me, and I'll set them up.
They said that they would practice five fifteen to eight, but I think they would practice a lot.
Yeah, they practiced till they went off.
Yeah.
If they were out there.
So maybe, alright.
I think I'm just setting them up for the same amount of time the track setup.
Okay, yeah.
And just the weekdays, you think, there's nobody there on the weekend?
Great for the fall, no, not scheduled anyway.
What'll happen is if we leave them on, kids recognize it, they'll come out and have soccer games at night, they basketball.
Yeah.
You gotta have a. Finished too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll turn them off, off, once.
The coaches will stay up there till.
Oh, yeah.
Parents are sitting in the cars.
Yeah.
That's alright. They don't coach for years.
Yeah.
They don't have any NCAA.
I've seen the cars lined up against the rail with the headlights on, just to get to end the practice. Dedication.
Yeah.
Let's, we'll do it, I, I think that'll, that's why they're there.
Okay.
So now we have a purpose.
It's good.
It's not like stadium lights, you know, it's not like baseball lights, but it'll definitely throw a lot of light.
That's all I got.
Just everything good at River Road, like? No tragedies, how about summer camp, no tragedies?
We did have one situation, uh, which I'm not going to go into.
Okay, don't.
Um, but you're. Going to make changes for next year. So. Yeah.
Good. Appreciate all you're doing. Glad you're still here.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
So you see the chain there, so, cause the chain is up on the other one there.
Did we used to have a chain there?
There was, yeah, there was a chain, and then there was. Yeah, when they were doing construction, but it's just wide open.
Are there islands that they can put a chain on?
I don't think so, it's a new wooden. Post, you know, brand new.
Maybe if we take care of the goal, you can get Troy to take care of getting the chain set up?
Yeah.
I sent this guy out there and drills out the posts.
Yeah, that's.
That'd be great, just to preserve the field, Eddie's ready. He's gonna get crazy one day. Alright, any other, uh, rec director reporting or new old business? Matt, you have anything you wanna add?
Hey, everyone, no, no, not really, I just, uh, thank you very much. Had, had a pleasure listening in, a lot of things going on, surprised about the, the attendance at the, uh. The music events, um, I went to one, but, uh, that's a lot bigger than the one I went to a couple of years ago, so. Terrific news, um, so, nothing to add, thank you.
Alright, thanks for being here, we appreciate it, huh?
Trying to drop in and get familiar, so, thank you.
Alright. Alright, so if, uh, we have nothing else, somebody wanna make a motion, or move to adjourn? So it is.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Matt.
Seven forty-seven, Mikey.
Good, and, uh, reporting if I can get the mouse. Wait, the mouse is off.
Hang on, we're still recording.
What is with that mouse?
Batteries.
Batteries, the mouse may all maybe do the battery.
No, I just changed it.
Okay. You gonna run again? It sounds like you're.
I gotta run with the pool.
Which one's Mike Cozy, fireman or something?
Yeah. Alright.